We'll go ahead and get started. Thank you for joining us this evening for our City Council meeting. We'll go ahead and get started. Shawnee, could you please call the roll?
Here.
Bray?
Here.
Cheatham?
Here.
Lurick?
Here.
Ortega?
Here.
Stevens?
Here.
Vlad?
Here. If you would please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, after which if you would remain standing for the invocation which will be offered by Pastor Brian Griffin, representing Pocatello Baptist Church.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Father God, we come before you. I want to thank you and praise you for just a great nation, state, and city that we live in that allows us to be able to gather to discuss the items that affect each and every individual life. I want to pray over this meeting tonight, Lord. I want to pray over each leader represented here. I want to pray you direct their hearts and their minds to lead this fair city, Lord, both tonight and in the future. And, Lord, as we await the outcomes of the most recent elections, Lord, and those that will yet to happen, as we wait for your will to be done, help us to do so patiently but with confidence, and may the leaders continue to preserve, and may you preserve them. We pray these things in the name of your Son, Jesus Christ, our Savior. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Okay, we'll move to the consent agenda item number... Oh, before I start that, if you are here for Agenda Item Number Eight, that item has been pulled from the agenda, and so if you're here for that, I apologize. It will come back on another agenda just in the future. It has been pulled. Agenda Item Three is a consent agenda. The following business items may be approved by one motion and a vote. If any one member of the council so desires, any matter listed can be moved to a separate agenda item. A. Minutes. Council may wish to waive the oral reading of the minutes and approve the minutes from the following meetings: May 20, 2021, City Council Liaison Work Session Clarification Meeting, and Clarification and Regular Council Meeting of August 5, 2021, and August 19, 2021. B. Material Claims. Council may wish to consider material claims for the month of October 2021. Jim, do you have anything to present for that, or any questions the council might have?
Luckily for all of you, I do not have anything to present.
Okay, thank you. Questions, council? See you now. Thank you, Jim. This, I might just add, is going to be Jim's last meeting with this, and so we hate to see you leave. Thank you for what you've done for us. This is one of those bittersweet's. His wife is calling him home, and he's saying, "I'm coming." So, thank you, Jim. C. Treasurer's Report. Council may wish to consider Treasurer's Report for September showing cash and investments as of September 30, 2021. D. Historic Preservation Commission Appointment. Council may wish to confirm the mayor's appointment of Jared Bartholomew to serve as a member of the Historic Preservation Commission, replacing Donald Elston, who resigned. Jared's term will begin November 5, 2021, and will expire February 5, 2022. E. Pocatello Regional Airport Commission Reappointment. Council may wish to confirm the mayor's reappointment of Michael Pallotti to continue serving as on the Pocatello Regional Airport Commission. Michael's term will begin, sorry, Michelle's term will begin November 20, 2021, and expire November 20, 2023. F. Sister City Committee Appointment. Council may wish to confirm the mayor's appointment of Jody McHugh-McHuff and Alyssa Schei to serve as a member of the Sister City Committee, filling a long-term vacancies. Both terms will begin November 5, 2021, and will expire November 5, 2025. G. Sister City Committee Reappointments. Council may wish to confirm the mayor's reappointment of Tip Savanna Sebunma to continue service, serving on the Sister City Committee. Tip Savanna's term will begin November 18, 2021, and expire November 18, 2025.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, I'd move for approval of Agenda Item Number Three, Items A through G.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilmember Cheatham, and a second by Lurick. Shawnee, could you please call the roll?
Cheatham?
Yes.
Lurick?
Yes.
Adamson?
Yes.
Bray?
Yes.
Ortega?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda Item Four, Proclamation. We have a proclamation, National Apprenticeship Week. It will be read by Councilwoman Claudia Ortega.
National Apprenticeship Week is celebrating its seventh anniversary of raising awareness of the vital role registered apprenticeships provide in creating opportunities by allowing apprentices to earn while they learn and preparing a pathway to well-paying careers in Pocatello and across the nation. And registered apprenticeship programs enable employers to develop and train their future workforce while offering career seekers affordable paths to secure high-paying jobs. And Pocatello recognizes the role of registered apprenticeship in expanding opportunities in our workforce that are inclusive of individuals who have been historically underserved, marginalized, and adversely affected by persistent poverty and inequality, thus providing a path for all qualified individuals, including women, youth, people of color, rural communities, justice-involved individuals, and individuals with disabilities to become apprentices and contribute to America's industries. And Pocatello recognizes that registered apprenticeship, a proven and industry-driven training model, provides a critical talent pipeline that can train and build up our workforce to address our nation's pressing issues, such as responding to climate change, modernizing our cybersecurity response, addressing public health issues, and rebuilding our country's infrastructure. Now, therefore, Brian Vlad, mayor of Pocatello, do hereby declare, does hereby declare, November 15, 2021 through November 21, 2021, as National Apprenticeship Week in the city of Pocatello, and encourages citizens to recognize the hard-working citizens and businesses of Pocatello during National Apprenticeship Week in November and through the year.
So, I've got Rick and Tony, Tony representing United Steelworkers, local 632, to receive this, so I don't know who's going to speak. Rick is going to speak.
Thank you. This is very important for our company, to our industry. Appreciate it.
You want to say something here? More than what you just said, Tony.
My name's Rick Phillips. I'm with the JR Simplot. I come here in Pocatello. This is Tony Chandler. He's president of United Steelworkers, local 632. There's a lot of things we don't disagree on, or we disagree on. This is one thing we do agree on. Apprenticeships are very important for not only the trades and the skills we have out of Simplot, but all across our workforce. So, we encourage young people everywhere to look into apprenticeships and use that as a great opportunity for career growth. Anything at that?
No, Rick just offered me an opportunity to come here tonight to receive this, and I agree that apprenticeships are very important. Unions have always been fairly strong in apprenticeships. Electricians, plumbers, pipe fitters, all that go through that, so I appreciate the proclamation.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. We'll move to Agenda Item Five is a calendar review. Council may wish to take this opportunity to inform other council members of upcoming meetings and events that should be called to their attention. November 11, City Council Work Session has been canceled. November 18, 2:00 p.m., City Council Liaison Work Session Clarification Meeting has been canceled. November 18, 5:30 p.m., Clarification Meeting. 6:00 p.m. will be a regular City Council Meeting. On November 11, Veterans Day, city offices will be closed for this holiday. Sanitation Department collection trucks will remain on their regular schedule. November 11, the Pocatello Historic Preservation Commission, HPC, is hosting an open house at Brady Chapel located at Mountain View Cemetery from 11:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. At the event, HPC members will provide tours and information about the nearly century-old structure. On November 12, early voting will begin at Bannock County Elections Office, 141 North Sixth Avenue, for the Pocatello mayoral runoff election, and will continue through Friday, November 26. Voting hours are Monday through Friday, 9:00 a.m. to 4:30 p.m. The Elections Office will be closed on Thanksgiving Day. Annual leaf collection is scheduled through November 27. Leaves must be placed in large paper compostable bags, not boxes, or plastic bags. I should read that again. Leaves must be placed in large paper compostable bags, not boxes, or plastic bags. Place compostable leaf bags curbside by 7:00 a.m. on a regular collection day to be taken to the Bannock County landfill compost site. Reminder, citizens are required to wear face coverings when entering any city of Pocatello buildings or facilities, or while riding in public transit buses at the Pocatello Airport.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Can I make an addition to that November 11, HPC thing? Jackie Albert's going to do a presentation at 1:00 at the Brady Chapel about two original founders of our community. One is Civil War veteran, both of them Civil War veterans, one from the Confederacy and one from the Union side, who were founders of our community. She's going to do a little biography. Both of those folks are buried in our cemetery.
That should be a good presentation. Okay, thank you. With that, we will move to Agenda Item Six. Agenda Item Six, A Public Hearing Resolution Foregone Balance. This time has been set aside for the council to receive comments from the public regarding a proposal to reserve the foregone amount for fiscal year 2022 in the amount of $707,927 for potential use in subsequent years as described in Idaho Code 63-802. Following a public hearing, council may wish to adopt a resolution to reserve the foregone amount of $707,927 for potential use in subsequent years in accordance with Idaho Code 63-802. I declare the public hearing open.
James Krueger, Chief Financial Officer. The resolution that you have before you tonight is a request to increase the amount of the foregone property taxes reserved by $707,927. The current balance, as it currently stands, of the foregone property taxes is $3,372,488. The amount of property taxes that the city could have taken as the 3% increase was $939,327. And the amount that the city actually took resulted in not taking $707,927 in property taxes, which by definition is foregone property taxes. The amount that the reserve would increase to if you choose to adopt the resolution would be $4,080,415 as foregone property taxes. That's the amount that the city would start next fiscal year with as the amount that is available for foregone property taxes. Before the city could use that foregone property taxes, either the amount that it currently has in reserve, which is the 3.372 million, or the additional amount of $707,927, there would need to be essentially, you would need to not take any of the 3%, or you could take the 3% next year, or a part of the 3%, but that process that you would go through would affect the foregone property taxes again. The way the legislation has worked on this is that each year, as you approach the budget process, you would have available to you up to 1% of... 1% could be used essentially for maintenance and operations, and 3% for essentially the capital projects that you might have. At that rate, essentially that balance, if you used any of that, that foregone property tax amount would be reduced. By virtue of the fact that you have a fairly significant amount in foregone property taxes, that means that you have foregone property taxes in the past as well. The genesis of the amount that is used as the 3% is based upon, quite simply, an L2 form that is provided to the city every year. This year, or for fiscal year 2022, the L2 form was not provided to the city until well into the process. We had to make estimates as to the amount of what the property tax amount would be, as well as what the 3% amount would be, as well as the new construction amount. And the reason for the delay in the L2 form was because of the legislative process. All of the county people that are involved with providing that L2 form went through a fairly lengthy process to get the final L2 form. And unfortunately, that information just was not available on a timely basis. Nobody's fault, other than it just wasn't available. So, that's the gist of what you have before you tonight. I have no basis to say whether you should or shouldn't pass this. It's just I'm offering this as an opportunity for you to reserve an additional amount of your foregone property taxes, or to choose not to. That's your choice, so. And I'm open to any questions that you might have at this point.
Could you clarify, because I wasn't tracking with you, at what triggers us being able to use that foregone?
So, it's kind of a complicated process, but as I understand it, essentially, if you used your 3% for the current year, you could use that plus any of, as much or as little as you chose, but your limitations then are associated with maintenance and operations, and with capital, a higher dollar amount for capital, and a lower dollar amount for maintenance and operations. It's much more formidable to be able to use foregone property taxes as compared to what the prior process was, but be that as it may, in the past, even though it wasn't as formidable as what will be in the future, many jurisdictions, including Pocatello, have not used much, if any, of their foregone property taxes.
So, essentially, if we used any foregone, it would guarantee that we were taking 3% and beyond?
Yes.
Okay.
Any other questions? I just want one clarification. In taking this and reserving this, not taking it, but reserving this, we are not increasing taxes this year, any at all.
That's correct.
Okay, I want to make sure that...
There's no indication at all that you're saying that you want to take that amount in the future, just reserving it for possible use in the future.
Perfect. Thank you. Okay, Jim, before you step down, have you received any correspondence to this in your office?
I received an email from Heather Diselcon. I believe the rest of the City Council and the mayor also received that same email.
Okay. Wanted to make sure that everybody did see that. Did we receive anything other than that in the clerk's office?
Nothing additional.
Okay. Thank you.
Would it be appropriate, since we know that there were some questions in reference to that email before we have the hearing, for maybe a quick just summary from our legal department indicating that this is in accordance with the laws of the state of Idaho, just because that might answer some questions that would come up in the hearing? Or do we need to wait and have that afterwards?
The hearing's open now.
Okay.
Should we...
I was just curious, since we've got staff up, if now would be an appropriate time, or if we should do that later?
You know what? I don't have a problem hearing our attorney and his opinion on some of the questions in there. If he's...
Did y'all hear that? He's never said that before.
A slip, a transient slip, probably. Would you please come down here, and yeah, I'm okay with you addressing some of these. It might clear up a lot of things.
Thank you, Mayor, City Council. Jared Johnson, City Attorney for the city of Pocatello. Yeah, I'll touch on some things, but it would certainly be appropriate to, if you have further questions at the end of the public hearing, to ask any questions that you have of me, or Jim, or anybody else at that point as well. The question was raised on the timeliness of tonight's public hearing and resolution, and I understand the basis of the question. The law that we are operating under tonight is brand-new. Well, it's fairly new. Last year was the first year that the law was implemented and enacted. This is our second year, but as you all know, as the time has gone on and the budget process has been touched on by the legislature, it's affected the timeliness of everything that we do in the budget. Jim mentioned the L2 numbers that we get from the county. Those are absolutely crucial to be able to know what the foregone balance is in this process. And quite honestly, this law is difficult because the timeliness of those numbers and the timeliness suggested in the statute do not line up. So, there's a conflict of terms within the statute itself. There's one portion that says that it shall be done at the appropriations hearing, and another one that says that it may be done during the budget hearings of the district, which we are a taxing district. So, as I look at everything that's contained in the law, the timeliness of everything, and additional instruction that we've been given by the Idaho State Tax Commission, I feel that we are very much in compliance with the law in having tonight's public hearing and resolution before you at this point versus when we had our public hearing and adopted the budget ordinance. So, with that, I would stand for any questions.
Was there any other questions that you had in mind, Heidi?
No, just basically that you did receive the guidance also, that this was an appropriate time. Right.
Basically, the guidance from the State Tax Commission is that this can be done at any time up to the end of the calendar year. I wouldn't want to wait that long, but certainly having it right now is appropriate. We have the L2 numbers. We know exactly what that foregone amount is, and we're complying with the intent of the statute, which is to have the council decide by resolution whether or not to reserve that foregone.
Okay.
Thanks.
Any other questions for Jared right now? We'll probably have him back down here in a minute.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jared. Then I would look for any testimony supporting the application. I'd look for any testimony uncommitted to the application. And I would look for any testimony opposed to the application. Heather, you're welcome to come up. I might just add, I have on this sheet for Item 19, we can't talk about it on 19, Lydia Noble, it's for this, and so I want to make sure that you're up here before you. Anything? Thank you.
Thank you. Heather Diselcon, Pocatello, Idaho. You know, most of you know me. I've been attending City Council meetings for the past, lost count, 22 months. Haven't missed a single council meeting, either in person, or if I wasn't able to come in person, I've viewed those online, and that includes special meetings, budgetary meetings, work liaison meetings. I consider myself pretty, fairly educated in the spectrum of things because I have attended so many of those meetings. I'm not going to take time to read, I mean, you all have received my letter. One of the things that I would bring up is that if you go back to one of my Pocatello for Accountable Government entities posts, I believe it was dated August 20, and I probably received that information at least three to five days after the city had it. I had already estimated, predicted the exact amount of what this foregone balance is. It's in my post. You can see it. It's in the history of the Facebook page. I also examined, you know, one of the things I've listened to over the many, many months is, and it's been mentioned many times, is the importance that we have to follow our statutes. We need to follow our ordinances. And as a citizen on the outside, when I see something in black and white that says Shell, I take that seriously. I understand that there's nobody that is overseeing that, and there's some flexibility in it, but when I went to look at four other cities, they were all able to get this resolution done within a week or two, if not right with, or budgetary hearing. The other thing I did is I went and I looked at the, and I can't think of his name right now, I forgot to print it off, the representative who proposed that bill change and passed the law change that was effective last year. His whole intent behind that is he wanted transparency for the members of the community, and it was his feeling that that resolution needed to take place at the same time that the budgetary hearing was taking place, because that's when you have the most interaction and involvement in your community. His theory was that they would be watching that and be aware of it. When you hold it three months down the road, most people don't even know what's going on, or that it's on the agenda tonight. I barely had time to respond to it because I often don't even get to look at the agenda until Tuesday or Wednesday. So, just keep that in mind for future. I think it's really important. I plan to reach out to this legislature and let him know what happened here, and get his input on what it was he was really trying to accomplish. But I think that was the importance behind that bill, and why he recommended, and he wanted that to be transparent to the members of the public, that this money was not collected this year, we're setting it aside, we may collect it in the future. So, I just wanted to add that. Thank you.
Thank you. Lydia, I want to make sure you get up here.
Lydia Noble, Pocatello, Idaho. I want everybody to understand that this is a choice that the council has, and I believe that I am dead-set against yet another set aside of foregone funds. Those taxes are something that the public is not aware of necessarily, and they're not understanding that it can come back to be charged to them. The city, our city, needs to make a better effort to live within our means and stop coming to taxpayers, and stop passing ordinances for foregone monies that can come back in the future to bite people. We can't keep doing that. Many Pocatellans have told me personally that they are struggling to pay the large increases in property taxes and rents that have occurred, especially over the last three to four years. Setting aside, yet again, taxpayer money that wasn't taxed against people, setting aside $707,000 and calling it foregone is wrong. We need to do a better job of controlling city spending, such as the high-dollar office remodels identified in recent monthly spending reports, and we need to begin to do more with less. I'm asking the City Council to please help us control costs more. People can't afford the taxes, and with all of these foregone amounts, I mean, the city already has $3.3 million of foregone. Is that not enough? What is enough? To take it up to $4,080,000? I don't see the need for us to do that with what we already have in the foregone amounts. We need to act more like a real company in controlling the taxpayers' money. We need to do more with less. That's how real companies work. I realize the city is different, but please understand, many Pocatellans have really been affected by all of the increases recently in property taxes, and I personally, as a citizen, just don't think that's right, and I don't want to see the City Council pass yet another ordinance to take us from over $3 million to slightly over $4 million in foregone. That's our tax money. I don't think it needs to be an ordinance passed to increase it like that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any others opposed to the application? Okay, then who would we like to respond? Jim, why don't you come down to respond? We have a couple of questions.
As I said previously, I'm actually not in a position of proposing anything. I'm just giving you this option as it relates to how much you could increase your foregone reserve balance, as the question was earlier from the mayor, as it relates to, does this actually increase the current property taxes? No, does not do anything to increase property taxes in the current year. In fact, it's saying that you went without the additional amount that you could have levied in property taxes, but that doesn't mean that you can't do something with that in future years. in future years. And again, as I stated in the testimony that I already gave, I believe, within the context of what I understand the law to be, is there are some, what I would consider formidable boundaries before you would actually use the forgone property taxes. You have not used those forgone property taxes in the past. One could then say, do you really need to increase forgone property taxes within that context? I'm not going to say whether you should or not, I'm just saying that it's available to you to do that.
Okay, any questions for Jim? Oh, Heidi and then Roger.
I just wanted to clarify that this is not, in fact, an ordinance. This is not a law that we are passing tonight. It's a resolution, which is simply a statement that we are acknowledging that we could have taken more tax, but we're not, and we would like the opportunity to evaluate whether the council would want to do that in the future. So we're definitely not setting aside anything by law or by ordinance.
Okay, thank you. Roger.
Two questions, Jim. First one, how do you envision us ever using forgone? What circumstance might not question this?
I appreciate that question very much because I think, within the context of perhaps what maybe it has been used in the past and what it could be used for in the future, an example would be, is you have a fairly substantial capital project that you believe you need to have some extra money in order to make that capital project occur. You would want to obviously go through a process that included vetting the capital project to make sure that it was something that you, as a council, agreed to, that it passed within the context of what you would look to see as financial responsibility as it relates to that. So that would be the one example I could think of. Beyond that, I can't say if, for instance, another example might be, if for some reason the Consumer Price Index goes up by more than 3% per year, and if the impact on the government being able to meet its demands for services is such that the 3% would not be enough to allow for that to happen within the context of what that means, Consumer Price Index increases, that might be an example of what you might want to use it for. And I'm not suggesting that that's going to happen. I'm only saying that it could. That would be an example of what, the two would be, the capital project and the other would be, costs go up way more than what that 3% is, and you need to dip into reserves to help with that. City council still needs to obviously act on that.
So another thing could be, this is a resource if we had a catastrophic event, you know, earthquake or something like that where we had to rebuild the infrastructure and some things like that.
Yes, and I appreciate that comment as well. And as well, a catastrophic event would undoubtedly mean that you'd need to act fairly quickly and on a nimble basis, which would include maybe using the reserves that you have within fund balance, for instance, your cash balances to help within that context, and then examine whether in fact it would be justified to dip into the forgone property taxes.
We can't do that outside of budget, so it's not like--
That's correct.
It's not like October 2nd, we have an earthquake, we can reappropriate it, we have to wait a full year--
Absolutely true.
--to figure that. If we do not, I think what the legislature is doing is it's saying, we set a 3% maximum. If you don't take that every year, you also have this forgone, but you got to make sure you officially put it on the shelf, because if we don't officially put it on the shelf, it goes off the shelf. Is that, is that my understanding?
Yeah, it's on the shelf. It's kind of like an inventory of potential dollars that you may need to use, but there's no requirement that you actually use it. But if you do want to use it in the future, you definitely have to put it on the shelf into the inventory of potential dollars.
Okay, Chris?
Doesn't this also open up the door, though, that if, for example, personnel costs balloon, and we have to expend our 3% in order to remain operational with current staffing and services, that this gives us an escape hatch, that we can then go and say, oh, and by the way, you know, we balanced the budget using, as we did this year, using one-time money, and then this gives us another escape hatch where we can go and say, oh, and we have to do these capital projects, so we're going to create an additional tax ask, as opposed to having, I'm just concerned because it, I believe it also can act as an incentive to not plan stringently and carefully within our means.
I can see the validity of that argument as well.
Jim, in order to use this, though, you've got to have a public hearing, you have a budget public hearing, but you also have to have a public hearing to dip into the forgone, and you have to name exactly what that money for the forgone is being used for. Is that correct?
Absolutely correct.
So you can't just say, we're going to take X amount of forgone balance because we feel like we need to and throw it out there. You have to have, be very specific on what that money is being asked for and taken for.
Yes.
And the city is complicated as the state allows us to be funded through taxes and all kinds of other things. They've also put a 3% cap on property taxes, but they've also put a total of an 8% cap on everything else when it comes to TIF districts being closed and things like that, new construction, forgone balance, and that 3% cannot exceed any of that. I mean, I know I'm getting very complicated because unfortunately, it is very, very complicated formulas, but we cannot, even with the forgone balance, exceed that 3%, or that 8%.
That's correct. As I've stated before, the financial policies that you have in place, I believe, should help you to navigate through the questions that you're going to have in the future as it relates to how you want to use your reserves, how you want to use potential property taxes, either the 3% or some of that 3% in the current year, plus any reserve balances for forgone property taxes. But within that context, the financial policies are paramount within that framework.
Sure.
You might want to incorporate some elements within the financial policies as it relates to how you deal with these types of things.
Sure. Okay, any other questions? Okay, thank you, Jim. With that, I declare the public hearing closed. The council decides items before you. How do you wish to proceed? Councilwoman Lurick?
Your screen closed. Are you doing it? Sure. Okay. Mr. Mayor, I move that the council adopt a resolution to reserve the forgone amount as outlined in Agenda Item Number Six for potential use in subsequent years in accordance with Idaho Code.
Second. And I just wanted to make a quick statement that, just to put everyone's mind at ease, I don't think anyone on this council has an appetite to use the forgone, but we do feel a responsibility to make sure that it is available in case of any unforeseen circumstance. So I don't think anybody here is going to be excited or looking forward to using that balance.
Okay, so we have a motion by Councilwoman Lurick and a second by Council President Adamson. Shawnee, could you please call the rule?
Lurick?
Yes.
Adamson?
Yes.
Ray?
Yes.
Chigum?
Yes.
Ortega?
I'm just concerned because I don't think our financial policies are what they should be. Yes.
Stevens?
No.
Okay, thank you. We'll move to Agenda Item Seven, the Public Hearing Zone Map Amendment Dead End of West Hayden. This time has been set aside for council to hear comments from the public regarding a request by Trevor Henderson for a zone map amendment to rezone approximately 2.33 acres of property from residential estates RE to residential medium-density multifamily RMM. The subject property is located at the dead end of West Hayden Street. The Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing on August 11, 2021, and recommended denial of the application. Staff finds the proposal does not meet the standards for approval. I declare the public hearing open. Council, has there been any extra contact or communication in regards to this agenda item?
I did make a site visit. I don't know if that needs to be noted. There was no extra communication, but I notified.
So we have a site visit?
I'm very familiar with the site, but I didn't visit it for the purpose of this meeting.
All right. Okay, I don't think any of that would preclude any decision-making, so. With that, Trevor Henderson, would you come up here as the applicant?
Thank you, Trevor Henderson, 410 Yellowstone, Pocatello, Idaho. Do I not get to sit down?
If you want to sit down, go ahead and scoot over here.
Most people like to stand, but-- Well, I've got a few things written out here. I want to make sure I stay on track and be efficient with our time.
So Trevor, we're gonna, when you start, we'll give you 10 minutes. When you hit seven minutes, we'll start this timer over here, so.
Okay. Forgive me, I had a dental procedure yesterday, and they asked that I keep water nearby, so if I drink water, I'm sorry.
If you need more, we'll get you another bottle.
Thank you very much. Well, looks good, man. Thanks for spending some time here this evening. I'm Trevor Henderson. I'm a lifelong resident of Pocatello, Idaho. I have an extensive background in real estate. I'm a real estate broker, licensed real estate broker. I've been, I just recently awarded the Emeritus Status from the National Board of Realtors, National Association of Realtors, as well as the Greater Pocatello Board of Realtors. I've been involved with real estate in many aspects throughout my life. My friend and I, Leland Jensen, a builder that since moved to Idaho Falls, we started, ignited the World War II basement home conversion back in the early 80s, when I started one at 641 North 14th. He went over to Wayne, several around town. So we take credit for that improvement around the city of Pocatello for those World War II homes, if you know what I'm talking about there. My father and uncle and I labored in the construction of the Bel Air Mobile Home Park, when Briarwood Mobile Home Park. My father and I worked really a long time to bring a subdivision together at Meacreek that was highly contested for some period of time until we had the Supreme Court rule in our favor. And so I'm familiar with turning nonproductive land into value and generating tax revenue. My brother and I have a, took a lot, small lot down on Lawton and South First, and brought that up with some beautiful buildings there. It's really enhanced the neighborhood. It took the revenue from a couple hundred dollars a year to nearly $8,000 a year for the city in revenue. I have rental, real estate rental management experience for over 35 years, and I'm familiar with the risks that people take to bring these type of projects to market and then make them work, making sure to get positive cash flow and things of that nature. I want to talk about four things here, the need for housing in Pocatello, the need for infill in Pocatello, the need for the revenue for the city, and try to address some of the objections that some of the naysayers have brought to the table. I have an email from Sonny Over at HAP, Sonny Shaw, Executive Director of Housing Alliance and Community Partnership, I'm sure you all know her, and she says, hi, TI, the fact is we have a real housing shortage in Pocatello. Two years ago, our voucher participants had a 63% lease-up rate. For every 100 vouchers out searching, 63 were successful at lease-up. That lease rate has plummeted to 28%. Households, and especially those in lower-income brackets, truly struggle to find housing. The tight market has a trickle-down effect that impacts the population we serve the greatest. Furthermore, the lack of single-family units to purchase has caused those potential buyers to move into the rental market. Again, a tightening. There are many factors, and I could discuss them all day long. The ultimate point is that we have a shortage in HACP seasons every day. I haven't been in the market, I mean, been in the business for a long time. I get calls frequently, what do you have for rent? Anything. I'm desperate. My voucher's going to expire, et cetera, and so a lot of people. I don't know if you saw the, an article from Zion's Bank, they have a community speaker series, and they have a new one coming. Utah and Idaho's housing markets are being described as hot, unhealthy, and severely imbalanced. Residents can't afford to buy homes in their home states. The impact housing has on the most vulnerable populations in our communities. So I believe a lot of you agree that we do have a housing shortage, and we do have a few places in town where we can take a look at the infill. I wanted to, do you have the report from Mr. Engels? Is he here, Gene?
He is.
Oh, good, great. Because he said he would, I questioned several things on his, on his report, and I'd like to go down through them quickly if we can. And one to talk about is staff review for item E2, where he talks about the property, subject property would permit one single-family unit on the property. And I don't, that's not correct, because it's 2.33 acres, and given his calculation of 15,000 square feet or greater per structure, per household, and 2.33 acres, given 43,560 square feet an acre, that would permit over six homes, provided we can meet the setback. We certainly don't have a problem with side, front, and back, I mean, to the, the side would be, might be an issue there, but already we can infill that with six homes. This is the rub on this piece of property. Rick, I commend you for going over and taking a look at it, and ma'am, I found that disappointing. On the Planning and Zoning Commission, I believe three out of the four never did go look at it. So I don't know, they weren't informed, is what I'm trying to get at. They weren't informed on this. This piece of property's been vacant for some time, and the previous owner had been into planning and zoning and always discussed with him multiple family houses there, I mean, multiple family units, because he had a fourplex just up the alley from there, and they never really gave him any problem about that. But somehow, the zoning got changed to this RE, and he may address that here in a minute. So given that we've already got potential of six homes there, why puncture the water and sewer lines six times, you know, when we can puncture it three times and put as many as three, fourplexes there? And if that might be too tight, there's an option there for two fourplexes. We've submitted drawings that clearly establishes the availability of parking for the development. He talks about the land uses within a 300-foot area. I'm sure you can't see this. This is an aerial, on the bright pinks, identify multiple family units. The blue, if you can see the blue, is the subject property, and the green are fourplexes, threeplexes, threeplexes and higher, triplexes and higher. You can see the neighborhood is dotted all the way around there. And I asked him, where do you come up with this? First off, Engels, do we let you rebut later?
He will present, and you'll have the final rebuttal, so.
Okay.
I wouldn't worry about him, you've only got two and a half minutes.
He can confirm what I'm trying to say there. We're not into the hillside, and he has direct access to the property. That would be E4. And that's a strange comment, because you can't go from Lincoln to Willow without going across this piece of property. So we have full access, unfettered access out here, and a secondary, which I don't think the only way to do is go down the alley. And I know the garbage trucks go down there to dump this fourplexes garbage in the alley. He can confirm that. He calls it a-- He calls it an unusual characteristic, but there are properties, several, out on Hawthorne and on South Second, where they have a 30-foot driveway back to fourplexes and as high as 15 duplexes out on Hawthorne Road. 3554 Hawthorne Road and 2419 South Second, which happened to purchase. Some of the concerns people have had, they talk about congestion in the neighborhood, and they talk about parking. Well, none of this development will be parking on the roads. They'll be in on the development, out of the way of people, and as you can see from this, once they come out here, they have three, one, two, three, actually four different ways that they can go to avoid congestion. They're not parking on the street, that is, it's a non-issue. Yes, it'll be a few more cars at work time, but that comes with when we try to infill these particular pieces of ground. Nothing has been proposed that reduces the risk, the availability of service vehicles or emergency vehicles that may really need anything, that they don't, they don't go there anyway, but it's still open. They have not, the second drawing shows that it won't prevent access to the neighboring neighbors' yards. But that argument goes away. The risk is, as a developer and an investor, the homes versus multiple family, good job on 10th and Cent Sublet, those five homes that we crammed in there, that looks, that's interesting. Over there in that neighborhood that has its challenges, some would call it blighted, the homes, its situation's not particularly, good one.
Thank you, Trevor. We're out of time.
Staff did not recommend approval based on items.
You'll have a chance here at the end here to rebuttal a little bit.
Very good. Thank you very much.
Thank you, then, staff.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. Jim Englesey, Long Range Senior Planner for the City of Pocatello. The request before you is a proposed zone map amendment to rezone a parcel of land at the west end of West Hayden Street near the intersection of Willow and Hayden from residential estate RE to residential medium-density multifamily RMM. The subject property is 2.33 acres, more or less, with 1.51 acres, more or less having a slope of 15% or greater. As currently zoned, the subject property would permit one single-family unit on the property as currently configured. The surrounding residential medium-density single-family RMS zoning district, of which a small portion of the subject property is zoned, would allow for a single-family unit or a duplex as currently configured. A zone map amendment from RE to RMM would significantly increase the allowed amount of density and intensity than what the surrounding zoning districts would allow. RE is separated from RMM by residential low-density RL and residential medium-density single-family RMS. If a rezone were to occur on the subject property, staff recommends that a portion of the property be rezoned from RE to RMS rather than RMM. Where the subject property is adjacent to an established RMS zoning district, it is the opinion of staff that this would be better aligned with the community's best interests. Within 300 feet of the external boundaries of the subject property, 17% of the total properties are undeveloped, and that due to its steep slope are most likely unbuildable. 3% of properties are developed with multifamily units. 1% of properties are developed with a duplex, and 79% of properties are developed with a single-family unit. Given the fact that multifamily units make up only 3%, and that 79% of the surrounding land uses within the 300 feet of the subject property are single-family units, staff has determined that the proposed zone change would not blend with the surrounding intensity and density of land uses in the neighborhood. The Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing on August 11, 2021, where they recommended denial of the application, finding that it does not meet the criteria set forth in Pocatello Code Section 17.02.170. Notice for this hearing was provided with respect to state noticing requirements, and staff has received group comment from the public regarding the application, and all comments received by staff have been provided to the council for review. In consideration of the application, staff concludes that the proposed zoning map amendment is not compliant with Pocatello City Code 17.2170. Should the council approve the application, staff recommends conditions as listed in the staff report. This concludes my presentation. I'll be happy to answer any questions on the hand.
Have any questions for Jim while he's up, council?
My, I'm focused on what you've said is a concern about fire trucks, emergency vehicles being able to go up there. Is that based on the current plan that this gentleman presented, or? I guess I'm confused about two things. It's 2.33 acres, but you're saying only one home could go there?
As currently configured, it could be subdivided for additional homes, but as currently configured, it's one lot, would only permit one home.
And what would the detriment be from your perspective, or the advantage be from your perspective, to subdividing versus not subdividing?
I don't know any advantages or disadvantages. One aspect of the property is that it's, a small portion of it is fronting Willow Street, the majority of it is facing the rear of properties. That may be the only detriment, but it wouldn't restrict from subdivision.
And if it were subdivided, then it would essentially allow something at least closer to what is being requested?
So long as it meets the minimum lot size, then yes.
And how many plexes could go on it if it were subdivided?
As zoned right now, as RE, it, RE only allows single-family homes at 15,000 square feet. And so if a surveyor could configure it in a way that it would meet all the setbacks, it could include more than one, two, three homes.
Any other questions for?
Is it appropriate to ask a question of the applicant?
Let's get to the rebuttal part of it, and then, so if you would write your question down so we don't forget it, that would be awesome. Thank you. Okay, with no other questions, then, Madam Clerk, has there been any correspondence in the clerk's office that the council has not seen?
Nothing additional.
Okay, thank you. And I would look for any testimony supporting the application. So there's a board right there. If you'd sign in, that would be great. Does the pen not work?
It's part of our economic austerity plan.
That's right.
You have to bring your own pen.
We're going to take a taxes for pens that work. Yeah, I've got one right here.
I won't charge the city for the ink I use in my pen. I, me and my wife were the previous owners. We sold it to Trevor.
Would you please state your name for?
Oh, I'm sorry. Leland Dilly. Address is 140 Valley View Drive.
Could you take your mask off? I'm having a hard time hearing you.
I would be very happy to take my mask off. And I've been told my voice doesn't carry very well, so wave at me if I'm not speaking clearly. It seems to me that, and we, previous to selling it, we had various times looked at developing it different ways. At no time did the planning and zoning ever tell me I couldn't proceed. They had suggested I might need to make some requests for variances, but the zone that it's now zoned as, we were never even notified of that zone change. I only discovered it way after it happened. And the reason I've been told for that is because the steep hillside didn't lend itself to development, so they wanted to try and maintain that undeveloped area. The problem is, this is not, the proposed development has nothing to do with the steep mountain. It's a perfect site to set a couple of apartment units, or a single-family, whatever development was chosen. There were numerous objections during the zoning hearing, and I attempted to address all of those, and then left, when this had previously scheduled, I left a copy of that with the city, so I'm hoping that you guys all had a chance to see those comments. And I don't have time to go through them in the 40 seconds left. The basic problem I see with the zoning attitude is, and everybody's attitude, is infill housing has been many times stated as desirable, needed, and this is a perfect site for that. The utilities, the infrastructure is set up just great, it doesn't cause any problem that way. And for people to say no, they don't want it, it's because of the typical, "Not in my backyard" business. It's got to happen in somebody's backyard, and this is a perfect sighting for that kind of development, I firmly believe.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any others supporting the application? Okay, any uncommitted to the application? Any testimony opposed to the application? Okay, if you're opposed, it looks like we've got a couple of them. You have the sheet right there. If you would write your name down, remember to tell everybody who you are when you start speaking, and then to speed this up a little bit, if you are opposed and you'd like to come over here, you can write your name down and just be ready, so you don't have to waste time writing it down while the presentation's there.
Seth Mayor?
How we doing?
My name is Chris Williams. I live at 711 Willow Avenue. There you go. I have lived there for three years, and I've lived in Pocatello for about 20 now. Fully agree, and I think everyone knows there definitely is a shortage of housing in the area. I think the opinion is that maybe this is just not the best place to do it. There are certainly other places more suited for multi-unit development. I don't, I assume we're all pretty aware of the parcel. If not, it's pretty easy to look it up on the Bannan County Parcel Viewer, one of my favorite city government websites. But the portrayal, Mr. Henderson's portrayal of 2.3 acres to develop is pretty misleading. You only get that number if you take the entire parcel, which includes the entire side of the hill behind, all the way down to my house. So like, this is a pretty steep hillside, which, if you look at the ground it is, it's much smaller with what seems available. You could easily put a single house there, which would be great, but the 2.3 acres involves the entire hillside behind all our houses. And I don't know what total plans have been submitted. I heard numbers talking about many tens of units. Obviously, how many you put in there affects it, but as it stands, on the flat ground that's suitable to build a house in, you've got room for much fewer units than I think has been proposed. My main issue and observation is, having lived there, I picked that spot because I thought it'd be a great quiet part of town up against the hillside, and I was pleasantly unsurprised about the amount of traffic that comes in there. That area, these are 100-year-old houses, that was built for houses and transportation before automobiles.
Chris, if you'd wait for a second.
Yeah, sorry.
If you're back there in the corner, we would like you to please be quiet so that the council can hear. Thank you.
Thanks, I'll try to speak a little less rushed and stuff. Anyways, these are roads that were built for pre-automobile society. Now, every house, most houses at least, have multiple cars. There's cars parked along the street. It's effectively a one-way street. And like I said, I was very surprised by the amount of traffic that blows through there. And so the reason I was opposed to this idea, I would very much welcome a single house, or maybe, depending on how zoning and stuff works, you know, a duplex or fourplex or something. New neighbors would be great, but the amount of units I was told were going to be put in would add a significant amount of traffic to an already very congested area that's just not built for it. The other issues about, which I know other people have more issues with them who live a little closer, about whose property line ends where, and whose house is going to have parking literally up against their windows. That's another issue for lawyers and things. And if Mr. Henderson cannot, or does not, is not able to continue with his plans, I'd certainly be very interested in chatting with buying the piece of land behind my house. Thank you.
Yeah, okay. So we formed a line, and I appreciate it. If you remember who you signed up after, that would be very appreciated. If not, we'll have Councilmember Cheatham read the names. Go ahead.
Hi, my name is Danielle Newman, 535 North Lincoln. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and City Council. I'm requesting that you deny this application on the following grounds. Planning and Zoning Commission already concluded that the proposed zoning map amendment was not compliant with city code. The problem is, again, that this is 2.33 acres, and one and a half acres of it is on a 15% slope. So if you guys decide that you're going to change that zoning, you're really going to be setting a new precedent with what happens with all the hillsides in Pocatello. So what we're left with is basically 0.8 acres, and the issue with that, and what has not been addressed with the Planning and Zoning Commission report, is that half of that property is an easement. It's a prescriptive easement that apparently it's not been officially considered a prescriptive easement, but it's been something, it's been a roadway and a thoroughfare that's been used for 100 years. The city paved it, the city plows it, it's used by city services, homeowners, and tenants alike. The house on the corner of Hayden and Willow also has a garage that exits onto it, which is apparently right next to this proposed parking lot that would be part of this whole thing. I'm unclear as to why the city allowed someone to purchase this thoroughfare in the first place. It really seems like an oversight on the city's part. If you look at that map, it actually shows that it goes out into a corner of Willow. So that doesn't make any sense to me at all, that he owns a portion of Willow. Allowing this roadway to be permanently blocked off makes no sense, and especially not for the purposes of developing low-income rental properties and using it as a parking lot. There simply isn't enough room for anything other than one single-family unit on the flat portion of the property that lies to the west of the alley. The alley should remain a thoroughfare, as it always has been. This is not about building tax revenue, or helping with the housing problem, or doing something with infill. It's just about destroying our neighborhood and turning it into a slump. We already have, within 300 feet of my house, there's a duplex in the back, there's a duplex across the street. We have enough, this whole area is supposed to be zoned RMS, and so I don't understand why we would change it to RMM. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Catherine Spivey, 539 North Lincoln Avenue. I'm trusting that all of you have looked at this property, because I think to vote on it, it's important that you know what we're looking at in flat space. There's only so much space that can be built on. So I think it's very important that we use some logic. What's there is there, and that's simple. You've got the rest of the notes.
Thank you.
Martha Jones.
I'm Martha Jones. I live at 956 West Wyeth and I
I live at 956 West Wyeth, and I have been there for nine years, and that neighborhood cannot take any more traffic congestion, it just cannot. The streets are narrow, as Ms. Newman has already stated. I support everything she said, I believe it. Do go walk that property. There's not 2.3 acres there. I used to have an acre and two-thirds in Boise, and it was way bigger than that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jose.
I'm Jose Costa, and I live at 605 Willow Avenue, right there on the corner of Hayden and Willow. And I wanted to thank all my neighbors for the support and cause, especially if they are not directly affected. You know, the 2.33 thing is a bunch of baloney, because I've done my own research there, and what's failed to be mentioned is that, right outside my fence in my backyard, there's a power pole, and attached to that pole are support cables, and that takes up an area of 650 square feet that can't be built on, because it's got to allow for the utility companies, and every other emergency vehicles or whatever, you know. I think Mr. Henderson's plans are not carefully thought out, and left me wondering if he even surveyed the lot at all. So the 2.33, that's, it's out the window, and I can prove it. I think that the, I believe that Mr. Henderson thinks that the council people are too stupid to see through his unreasonable request, and trying to deceive the council members into approving some half-baked idea.
So let's focus on the property and not focus on...
Well, that's what I'm trying to do. I'm trying to explain it's worth that.
But I don't want, but I don't want any speculation or derogative things stated toward anybody.
I understand you.
Mr. Henderson, or anybody on the council as well. Thank you.
That's it? Well, I wanted to say that...
You can continue to talk.
Okay, thank you. My decision to speak about this thing is because I just moved to Pocatello. I bought a house right there, with the understanding that I had a garage and access to it, you know. And also, when they first started the program, the process on eliminating the trees and brush, they took out 30 feet of my fence and didn't even bother to tell me. You know, that's, that's, you know, I mean, who does that? What kind of company or person does that? And then they, they said, they promised me they would repair it, go to Home Depot. They never did. When I woke up the next morning, went out there, and it was this jock that they tried to bind together, you know? And I, you know, I just see that as, you know, just bad work ethics, and, you know, the, and they left big holes under the fence where my animals can get out, and according, in his words, he said, "It's not my problem if your animals get squished," and those words exactly. And I just don't think that, like Catherine was saying, I don't think that you have a right to vote on this if you haven't been there to see what I'm talking about, you know, or what we're talking about.
Thank you. All right.
Dean.
My name is Ryan Bean. I live at 926 West Wyeth. Thanks for giving me the opportunity to talk. I just, I moved here about 15 years ago to attend physician assistant school at ICU, and I've, I'm still here. It was a quite old neighborhood. I live right on the inlet to that alleyway, and I've watched for 15 years them have significant trouble getting the garbage truck every Tuesday, and I've also seen multiple emergency calls. There's, and they have to bring the fire trucks out and park on Wyeth just to go down the alleyway, because they can't get ambulance and, and the fire truck to go down there. So I have quite a lot of concern about just the ability to get emergency and garbage vehicles down the alleyway. The other thing is, there's four units right across the street, and two units right next to me in that alleyway already. I've been battling parking issues for literally the whole time I've lived there. There's so little parking in that area, there's no driveways, so they, they end up parking on the side of my house. So the thought of adding multiple more units into that little area that just can't handle it is kind of mind-blowing to me. So anyway, thank you for hearing me out.
Thank you. Dylan.
My name's Dylan Merle. I live on 545 North Lincoln Avenue. I have major concerns with this, mainly with turning the road itself into a parking lot. It's already difficult enough to get through there, and if we add in 24 parking spaces along the road there, it's just going to be a really tight squeeze, fit to get any, like, emergency vehicles, or the garbage truck, or anything like that. And then the fact of it's a utility lane back there, because one, it's a fire lane, it's got a marked sign there, so I feel like if we had 24 parking spaces, trying to get a fire truck around there to get up to the hill if it says "Catch Fire," it probably wouldn't be able to fit through. And then, stuff like how there's a city sewer running down there, I'm pretty sure my city sewer is hooked up to it, that goes along that road. And I don't think you should be able to necessarily put parking spaces there, because that should be an easement. If there's one city, there's utility lane, all those things. Thank you.
Thank you.
Michael.
My name's Michael Perez. I'm Dylan's father. I know there was claims that there, that sewer line has no flow through it. It's a city sewer system. I've checked it myself. I've done drain cleaning. I know what a city main is versus a personal line. There's multiple lines flowing down that alleyway. Whether it's his or not, I'm not sure. I know that easements should have been in place for the city sewer to be put in that alleyway. I don't know why they weren't. That is not my, that's not my choice to know that, or when it was done. That alleyway sees a lot of traffic, because it is a bypass route. A lot of those homes make ways through those areas down that alleyway, because it comes out on Willow. The way it drives, it's not a bad road. It's gravel, and there's also pavement under that gravel. It just hasn't been upkept. There is still pavement down through there. So I know that at one time, the city had to have put that in. There had to have been some easement or agreement to what they say is his property, for the city to spend money on that roadway. That's all I have for you.
Thank you.
Lynn Peterson.
He's coming.
Good evening, councilors and Mr. Mayor. I'm Lynn Peterson. I live at 946 West Wyeth. My property is adjacent to this questionable piece of property here. As for that pavement on that alley, they paved that, oh, we moved into 946 West Wyeth in 1967. And that pavement, Mr. Henderson said was ends and, and stuff that the city threw on there? No, it was paved the same time all the alleys in Pocatello were paved, when they tore down the old Pocatello Mall. And the city paved them all. So I believe there was an easement there at one time, because I have a valuation, property valuation, on Mr. Henderson's property, that says it's 1.9 acres, not 2.33, not 2.44. And I believe that missing half acre are the easements. I'm not sure about the half that's. As for the zoning, the people who put that zoning in there, I'm sure did plenty of research. And that hill is not buildable. And if you observe the easements, there's barely enough room to put a single dwelling there. As for your 24 parking spaces, everybody drives up that alley, because it's one-way traffic on all of them. I mean, you have to give and take on all those narrow streets over there. So they use that bypass all the time. Or you have to wait for the other guy to go by, so you can go by. Any overflow of parking, which I'm sure there, that'll come up, is going to be on the street. And when I counted the, the parking spots on my block on the street, there were six available. All the rest were taken. That was after 6:00 PM on multiple days. So my request is, let's not change that zoning at all. Thanks.
Thank you.
And finally, Darrell Hill. Mr. Mayor, before Darrell speaks, I need to mention, he is a relative of my wife, so somehow we remain...
Yeah. Sorry, Darrell Hill.
I'm Darrell Hill. I live at 555 North Lincoln. My question to the city council and the mayor is, my deed says I own 165 feet of West Hayden and 165 feet of South Hayden's. So where has the easement gone to? And his proposal was not allowing me to get in and out of my driveway and my garage. And it stopped me all summer long. I finally got my trailer out and moved it. But this is what I'm saying, is we can't, there's 86 cars a day go down that alleyway, that easement. That's on tape, if you want to get a copy. And there's, that's on an average. So this dead end, the only thing it's dead end is West Wyeth, or is West Hayden, because it ends right there. And again, he talks about the power poles. You've got all those guidelines. You've got to have so many feet around each one of those. There's one on the corner of my place. There's one down the street on, and up the hillside. So this wasn't all thought in, and that's all I have to say.
Thank you.
That's it.
Is there anyone else opposed to the application? Okay, thank you. You opposed to the application? You look serious here.
You look, you look opposed.
Okay, that's, that's okay. You definitely look opposed.
Are setting it off.
So, so would you sign that sheet of paper right there?
I sure will. So I've been listening to it out there. I can hear it better out there than I can here.
I believe that. And if you'd state your name and...
My name is Peggy Hill. I'm Darrell Hill's wife. We camp. We have a camper. All summer long, we could not move our camper out, because he had dug up the trees and the tree stumps, and he pulled them out, and he blocked our way. We, all summer long, we couldn't go camping. You know, if he builds what he wants to build back there, we're not going to be able to get our camper out of our driveway, because it's going to be blocked in again, because where he's building is right behind us. And the street is already narrow, and he wants to take, well, I've lived in my house for 23 years. For 23 years, I have taken care of the lot behind my house, where he tore the trees up for the first five years I lived there. I took care of it. I cleaned it up, because people would dump crap, because they, "Hey, open space, let's dump crap." We cleaned it up. We kept it clean. Then I asked code enforcement, I got told I had to move my trailers. So I parked them outside of my fence. I asked code enforcement if it was okay. They said yes. Fun, you can park there. He gave me 13 days to move them, or I was going to have them towed. So we moved our trailers. I have mowed the hill, I have watered the hill, which he says is his land. He's never taken care of it. All summer long, he never come and watered it. He never came and cut it. He didn't bring a lawnmower and cut it. We did it. We took care of it. We took care of his land, because it was right outside of our fence. If he tears out that hill to put parking, I don't know what it's going to do to my fence, I don't know what it's going to do to my trees. We don't have the parking in our neighborhood for what he wants to build. A single family, yes. We, you know, if he builds a single family with a garage and parking by the house, yes, as it is now. People are fighting for parking spaces, because half the houses in the neighborhood don't have a driveway. All they can do is park on the street. You know, we're lucky, we have a driveway that we can't get used, but we do have a driveway. Our next-door neighbor has a driveway. The one next door to them have a driveway. We're going to struggle getting out of our driveways if he builds what he wants to build. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Okay, is there any others opposed to the application?
I'm really against it.
I appreciate that, I can tell that. I can feel the passion. Any other opposed? Thank you, Peggy. Any other opposed? Okay, then we would give Trevor an opportunity for rebuttal of different things, and I don't know if you wrote all the questions down.
Can I stand up? Wow.
Well, you wanted to sit down a minute ago, now you want to stand up?
I'm sorry, and I, I don't want to, no, hey, you know, look at this, there's, how many homes butt up to this? One, two, three, four. They're using this as a thoroughfare? People are coming up here to access these homes, or this home over here on Wyeth? I mean, I just, you know, I know these people are passionate and excited and upset and all that kind of stuff, but they have let their wild imaginations run away with them, on the thing. How many times have we heard, "Parking, parking, parking"? Here's a rendering. You know, we submitted a, a concept design, and there's enough room for three buildings there, easily three buildings.
Will you give that to Councilman Stevens?
Here's, here's two buildings, here's all the parking on the property. It's not going out the street. It's not getting, and these people are telling, "We're building right up," and they're going to look in their yard with a, with a window? I mean, that's just blatantly and patently false. And I'm sorry that they have to get so excited and run away with those kind of comments here. And now you have to discern what's really factual and what isn't. Mr. Engelsi's already established there's 2.33 acres. I don't know how many people think there isn't 2.33 acres, and county records prevail. I don't care what they measure, or what, how many tape measures they had out there, it prevails. Let's go ahead, they just keep talking about the slope factor. I, I don't understand that. We're not in the bill, we're not in the slope. We're at the toe where the slope hits the flat area, and let's utilize that flat area. We can, we can build on that, make some multiple family units in there, and infill this lot. Let's get some revenue involved with that. There's need for housing. You know, there's, yes, the sewer does come down the property, okay? And this might be a topic for later, but there is not a, an easement for that. There is not an easement for that, okay? Mr. Dilly owned it, now these new people own it, and it covers, you know, it comes right down here, goes right down here. How easy is this going to be? We don't have to get into anybody's blacktop and punch in for a sewer. We will have to get into the blacktop here a little bit for water, but it's just right at this end. And you see that the property extends out into that intersection. I believe there is a, an ambiguous easement, road easement for West Hayden, but it doesn't say where, and what, to what end, how wide, or anything like that. It's very ambiguous. You know, he talks about the garbage truck. You know, the garbage trucks, you know, they, they come in here and dump this, the fourplex that Mr. Dilly used to own is right here, okay? They, they make do with what they have here, and again, count the number of homes that that really affects. One, two, three, four. They're, it's not proposing to block anybody's home, they're not putting a building here and looking into their bathroom, or anything like that. They've stated. I think, you know, you can't verify what they've said, and I think the needs of the many outweigh the needs of the few. Let's take advantage of this piece of ground, and I, you know, I just, we think when you put...
It's our neighborhood.
Did that, that him, it's Trevor's time, you had an opportunity.
Put five seconds back on the game clock, please.
No, I don't have a game clock.
Anyway. It's a risky business to go into that neighborhood. Yes, it's their neighborhood. It's nice. But to just focus on a single-family home... I mean, do your measurements. Do your math. Right here, if you put a single-family home, it has more area than the five adjacent people either which way. That just doesn't make sense economically as far as a risk assessment versus the amount of money you're going to put that in there. They keep talking about traffic congestion. There's going to be a few cars. But again, look at the diagram. Look at the property lot. All the parking's on the property, not out here in the alley, not on the road. We're not flowing over into there. All of that can be commented about.
I have a question for you.
Oh, please, please.
So if people's driveway is back up to that non-easement area, I'm kind of bothered by the fact that you thought it was okay to block access to their garages. I'm kind of bothered by that.
Well...
I'm not going to lie, whether it's your property or not.
Did you go look at it? Okay, wherever they've blocked it?
I don't know.
There's no... Nothing's been blocked. The tree stumps are clear over here. Okay? The width of an alley is 20 feet. That's 25 feet away from theirs. That's as much property or ground that they've been used to using. And what they're trying to do is curb anybody coming way out and around here and reducing the flow of traffic through that area. I mean, some people just, like these people, they think it's all theirs and whatever they want to park there, dilapidated trailers, that housing now code had to move, it's just fine. And let's clean this up. They said she's taking care of it because people dump back there. Well, let's put something nice in there. That would help that. So they haven't blocked anything, ma'am.
Okay, I have a question for you.
Hold on. Mr. Mayor, I recommend that we use the public hearing that we let into as rebuttal. Close the public hearing and then questions can be asked of whoever you elect.
Okay, okay.
That was... Yeah. Go ahead, Trevor.
The alleyway, they've never had a paving... They've had a truck with maybe asphalt on it that they've dumped and spread out there.
All right.
I know, and it's not 2.33 acres there either, right? Okay. So anyway, they've put it there as someplace to get rid of their tailings. Okay? They've just put it there, spread it out in an effort to maybe keep the dust down on the alley. They've not had a paving machine in there. They've had maybe a truck with some asphalt on it and just dumped what's left there and ran over it, you know, to keep the traffic down. I mean, to keep the dust down. Again, we're not parking on the street. Yeah, it's hundred-year homes and they're small lots and it's too bad that, you know, we have so many cars in our families now. But nevertheless, we're not parking out on the street. We're not blocking anybody's access. We have access to the left Willow, down here to Johnson, to North Lincoln, and what's this one? Anyway, there's three arteries. One, two, three. One, two, three, this way, one, this way. And so they're easily disseminated out into traffic.
Okay, Trevor, really quickly, another question that was asked, I wrote down, there is a number of times the concern of emergency vehicles, fire, ambulance, things like that, having access and being able to get back into that area. What does that... Help me with that.
What's going to change from what's there now? You know, I really doubt any emergency vehicles ever been down here. They may have gone over here and parked out here on the road or something over here, but what's going to change?
Well, you're going to add a whole bunch of housing or places that we could have that there could be emergencies. So the question is, the question is, is will an emergency fire truck have an issue getting into the alleyway to protect the citizens?
Not any more than they have now.
Okay, so the answer is yes because you're going to add people. So there's going to be more people at risk.
Does that block the emergency vehicles?
Well, if there's not enough... If it's not wide enough, I guess.
Okay, all right. So the question was, is that going to block them from getting down there? No, it's not going to change anything. Again, if you take a look at that rendering, there's... I think that shows 35 feet wide. That's as wide as some of any of the streets there. So if they can't go down that already, then it's not going to block it off.
Okay. Another question was the driveways. You've already answered that. Council, are there any other questions that he has not answered?
I guess he could speak to some of the questions that were brought up about some of the neighbors were welcoming, you know, maybe a duplex or a four-plex. Why would that be acceptable to you?
Well, what we're looking at is changing the zoning to RMM. If you have one duplex...
Yes, I know.
What's one four-plex or two four-plexes, you need RMM supposedly.
Yes, I know.
Unless you want to do something different and say, well, we're going to keep this only, but we're going to grant you two four-plexes. So, and again, that part of the staff procedures will give us a concept, a concept plan. We went out there and measured it. You know what? Three would fit on there. We can fit the parking in there and not in the street. Okay? We went back, had a great architect and helper on that. We measured it out. You know what? Two. We can even get two on there and still allow full access up and around through here.
And what is it you're exactly currently asking for?
RMM zoning.
No, no, I know that. But how many buildings in your dream world, how many plexes would you put in there?
Given the size of everything and the size of the sewer and the size of the water, it can accommodate three buildings. All right? If that's too much, then all right, let's look at two. So nothing's really set in stone there because all we're trying to do is get to the RMM point and then see what we have from there.
So you want either eight or 12, but eight would be satisfactory to you?
Yes.
And how many parking spaces would you provide for eight?
It's two per unit, so there'd be 16.
But I think the problem is that should two working parents live there with two high schoolers, you could easily have three vehicles. And I, as I'm trying to listen behind the concern, and you yourself said we have so many vehicles per family now, I think part of the concern is that the number of two-car families, if they have children, is small. I mean, I've walked a lot in that neighborhood and there are a lot of homes where it's clear that there are three or four vehicles for valid reasons. Or there's a sports vehicle or there's a, you know, some kind of a trail something or other, which I don't do that, so I don't know what's what. But anyway, you know, it's... I can appreciate the fact that there could easily, in my mind, be overflow that 16 parking spaces wouldn't...
So I want to focus, bring us back to focus on, and I know Council President Adams and got us off track here.
Sorry.
But I want to focus on the question at hand. The public hearing is, the request is to change the zoning from RE to RMM. And so let's...
If I may, Mayor, to keep in mind that there's a portion of this that's already not... It's already RM, it's RMS. We would need the... Would like or propose the RMM. So there's a part of the property that's already RMS. So the whole thing is not RE, which is that restrictive residential estate zoning.
Okay. All right. Any other...
I won't be able to make any decisions until I get answered my questions.
If I may, we seem to have migrated from rebuttal to deliberation, but we have closed the public hearing.
Well, we have another question. I was trying to get us back to the public hearing. Thank you, Mr. Attorney.
Always.
And my question is for Mr. Henderson, related to some of the comments about the utility lane and the guy wires and that kind of thing, that that takes up space. Do you have any comments on that?
I want to be kind, but he also stated that there aren't 2.33 acres. There are 2.33 acres. Check with the county.
Well, that's not the question, but is it?
You addressed your issue. All right. There's... I talked with Idaho Power. They have a power line here that has stabilization thing there. People go up and down here, up and down here, just fine as it is. We're not blocking that. It would be better for them to move that over here. And they've thought, okay, we could probably do that. Here, that's way over on this side, out of the way. I mean, this is almost 60 feet wide. All you need is... Well, what they've been working on is 20-foot alleys. Some of these properties on Hawthorne and South Second, to get down to these multiple families, 16 duplexes, four and five four-plexes are only 25, 35 feet wide.
Does Idaho Power have any plans to move?
I've explored that with them. I mean, nothing until we push the button or push them on it because right now, why would they? It's just habitat for raccoons and skunks. And I tell you, some of these people up here would be happy to have those guys evicted.
Okay. Are there any other questions? Okay. And with that, thank you, Trevor.
Thank you.
I declare the public hearing closed. Council decides before you that how you wish to proceed. And I know we have a question for Jim, I believe, and who else did you want to hear from?
And probably Merrill. But Jim, how much is that flat buildable... How much space is the flat buildable space?
It's about half. It's flat, so half of the site is greater than 15% and about half is flat.
Okay. Dump it down for me. So the 15% is not buildable, right?
Yep, right.
So from the 2.33, about half of that?
About one acre.
Okay, great.
And that also includes the... What's currently being used as road in that acre as well.
Merrill, is there an easement there or not?
There is a 10-foot sewer easement that I did read. I was looking through my pack to see if I printed it. It's not there, but there is a 10-foot sewer easement that runs through the alley. There's, as we go through, and there are a few other utilities there, but a while back, I did come across a 10-foot sewer easement.
So what does that do to the buildable acreage?
That doesn't do anything as far as the plan here. It would be... Need to be unobstructed so that we could still get trucks there and everything as long as it was out of the way of the parking in there so that it could... And that's the same way with all the utilities.
And I'm not very good with acres, half acres, all of that sort of thing. I live on almost two acres and so I'm trying to think... I mean, I'm trying to imagine putting four four-plexes on half of my property, and I can't quite see that without making it very congested. But, I mean, what does it... Like a typical four-plex in Pocatello that was built recently, how much with parking and everything, easements, whatever is all included, typically how much land does one four-plex absorb? I mean, you see...
That's a good question because it's subjective, I guess.
Well, I guess, I mean, we've had other multiple units come before us, so I'm just trying to think, you know, I mean, you're a typical person who builds a four-plex...
Let's just say that the four-plex is 60 foot by 60 foot square or 45 by 45, depending if it's two layers high or something. So that's roughly the footprint of the... That would be on the ground.
And how much of... Translate that into a percentage of an acreage, acre for me. I mean, give or take.
3% maybe. I'm trying to... 45 by 45 would be 900. So... And then 43, 560. So it's very small footprint that way.
Okay.
Thanks, Merrill.
I did have a couple of things that I think might be beneficial, Mayor, if I may, as I was writing it down. There would be... There's... There is a sewer that is there, so you know. Water would need to be extended from Willow and Lincoln. And any of the utilities that would have to be moved or relocated, like type of guide wires or anything like that, that would be worked through the individual utility companies at the developer's expense. And then also for emergency, I know Ryan's here, but the emergency would need to either have a turnaround with that density if it's over 150 feet in depth, or it would have to maintain the full through as been historically used.
And in the current plan, that... I mean, there's... I didn't hear anything about a turnaround. So the through access is maintained in the current plan as you understand it?
That's what it looked like within the packet. That's all I can go off of. I didn't see any details, but that's what it appears to within the packet.
And was the planning and zoning commission's objection that it simply didn't fit the zoning? Or did they have these kinds of spatial concerns?
No, they had the concerns. They had the concerns within the package.
Okay, sorry. I guess I could read more carefully.
It didn't meet the criteria based on code. That's what they denied it based on.
I'll make a motion.
Okay.
What agenda item is this?
Seven.
Seven? Oh, Lord. I move... Thank... Okay, I was just going to ask you, if I want to say no, we're going to deny the motion, deny it?
So this is a... Yeah, this is an application that you would either grant or deny.
Okay, so I move that we deny based on staff recommendations. And for me, primarily, it's... It's... Yeah. And planning and zoning commission. And for me, primarily, the concern is safety vehicles, being able to get in there and service more buildings and more humans. Although I am a big fan of infill, but this just doesn't seem to have been thought out well. And quite honestly, when you have this much opposition, you're a developer, you're no dummy. I mean, this is not going to go well for you when these many people are opposing you.
I second the most.
Sorry, Mayor, did you adopt the findings or did you just follow the recommendations from staff? I wanted to make sure that was covered.
How about if I adopt the findings? What do you want me to do?
I want you to do whatever you want to do, Peter.
I'm going to adopt the findings and follow the recommendations.
That's fine.
All right. Covered all the bases.
So is that a change of the motion? No.
No.
It's just an elaboration.
That's... Okay. Okay, so we have a motion by Councilwoman Ortega and a second by Bray.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Can I just make a statement before we vote?
Sure.
I know you were mad at me last time when I...
No, you got us off track. I wasn't mad.
So, Mr. Henderson, I just want you to know that I have spent hours and hours reviewing this. I have read through our ordinances. I have visited the site. I have spent a lot of time on it. If there's any member of the council that is pro-development and pro-infill, I think everyone would probably agree it would be me. And so I don't want you to feel like just because people came out, you know, to protest that things didn't go your way. I want you to understand that we have all read through these, you know, tons of pages, tons of documentation, and we have spent a lot of time and effort going over this. So I just wanted to say that to you. I know there was a concern about a "not in my backyard" sentiment. I want you to know that we encounter that a lot regardless of the land use. And it's kind of a different story if somebody's saying, I want to walk my dog there and I kind of a different story if somebody's saying, I, I want to walk my dog there, and I want to picnic on that property, and I don't ever want a neighbor. But there are some other legitimate concerns that do need to be considered, which we have reviewed and gone over. So I just wanted you to know, I think you still have some other options. You know, in talking with staff, we're not here to tell you what to do, but there are some other options, like has been noted earlier, if you wanted to pursue subdividing, or maybe even look at an RMS, instead of taking it two levels, maybe taking it one level, those would be some options. I'm not saying you have to, but I just want you to know, we're not trying to be jerks, but we do have to, to make sure it fits with the surroundings and that it would be appropriate before we change zoning.
Okay, so we have a motion by Ortega and a second by Bray. Shawnee, would you please call the roll?
Ortega?
Yes.
Bray?
Yes.
Adamson?
Yes.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Lurick?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. And we'll move on. Agenda item eight has been polled, and so we'll move to agenda item nine. Appeal of Historic Preservation Commission Decision 100 South Arthur. Messina Price, Representative Venture Valentine Ballroom, has appealed the Historic Preservation Commission, HPC, decision denying a certificate of appropriateness for door signage. Messina, would you like to come up here unless we have a motion right now? Messina, you can come and answer any questions that the council might have.
I came alone. I didn't bring, after all that, I'm like, oh, maybe we should have brought, brought some cronies along.
Messina, I don't know, if you want to take your mask down, it seems to be easier for some of the council members to hear.
Okay, so, yes, I was denied my certificate of appropriateness for the door signage at 100 South Arthur, which is the Valentine building. I believe it was based on regulations that have not been updated in a very, very long time. I think every building downtown needs to be judged individually. They're very different buildings. We have, the reason I did what I did to those front doors was we have temperature issues down there with the sunbeats on that side of the building seven hours a day, especially in the summertime. And when we first moved in, our temps were easily up in the mid-90s, and we had wedding cakes melting, we had all sorts of issues. Our utilities were sky-high, and once we put up those light, light-blocking, temperature-control screens on those front doors, it made a world of difference. Part of the denial was based on measurements of they're larger than six square feet. You can correct me, Jim, if I'm off on that. But front doors are larger than that, and to have left a couple feet uncovered would have, one, looked ridiculous, two, completely defunct the whole idea of trying to control temperature and light. And just the regulations that were, you know, that the denial was given on, just didn't make a lot of sense to me. They look nice, we've made quite an investment in that building. That is the basis of my opinion.
Any questions, counsel?
I have a motion.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, can we hear from Jim, from staff on HPC?
Jim? Sounds like we have a question for you.
I'd just like to have him iterate the HPC's denial reasons and so forth.
And Jim, if you could also touch on the, maybe your perspective about whether or not those solar screens could be considered in fact a, a display rather than a sign, that would also be helpful, I think.
I can go through that. So, so when it was first brought up, and as staff saw it, and with the report that staff provided on that, we, we determined that that was a display at the time, and during, during the review with HPC, it was determined that unbeknownst to staff, that the images on the doors displayed products that were sold, which would constitute a sign. And the current regulation states that on doors in the downtown area, you're only allowed signage six square feet, and that would, that would allow for a business name or a contact, et cetera. And so that, that was kind of the, the direction that the HPC went, they, they determined that it was signage rather than a display. Displays would have been permitted outright on, on doors like that. But where it's constituted as a sign that was then determined signage that exceeded the six-square-foot requirement, which was why it was denied by the HPC.
Whose regulation is that about display versus signage?
Display versus signage is in the sign code.
Those city ordinance.
Yep.
Can I say anything? I don't know when I can and cannot talk.
Sure, go ahead.
Okay. That was a lot of the confusion with, to me, when opening this business and getting the building and doing this huge renovation, was this is not signage. I'm not mounting this on the marble on the front of this 120-year-old building. I am not changing any structure on this building. This signage can be peeled off in five minutes if I want to. I didn't look at it as a sign. I honestly, to the truth, didn't even know the difference between a display and a sign when we did this. It was done to make the building look good, to regulate temperature, and to let people know what the building was now used for. So, part of the argument of we're not allowed to advertise on our front doors what we're doing in there is hard for me as a business owner to swallow, because when you've invested a half a million dollars into a renovation of one of these historic buildings downtown, and then you're not even allowed to let the public know what's going on inside that building and what you're trying to do with it, that very much inhibits business and makes it very difficult to stay open. When we're trying to rejuvenate that area downtown and keep these businesses open, multiple business owners down there have expressed, how are we supposed to do that when we can't advertise on our doors or our windows or let anybody know? And the businesses down there flip over inside those buildings regularly, to where, when I put out my petition after receiving the misdemeanors and having all of this blow up and putting out this petition and putting it online, a lot of the feedback I received from people that have moved into the area are, we drive around downtown all the time, and we have no idea what's going on inside these buildings. And I've lived in six different states, and I drive down there, and I'm like, are there even businesses in these buildings? Because none of us are allowed to let people know or advertise on them. And I just, I think that's part of why people struggle down there, and businesses can't stay open, is nobody has any idea what's going on behind these doors, and you have to get out of your car and walk into the building and try to find a business owner or an employee to even figure out what the heck is going on inside. So I just think the regulations need to be updated. I think we need to be allowed to advertise a little bit tastefully, and I think that we need to update a lot of the signage regulations and what we, as business owners and building owners, can do with our own buildings.
So are you the business owner or the building owner?
I am the business owner, not the building owner.
Rick?
White? A member of the HPC. At the time, not currently on the HPC.
And when I sat in front of the HPC, most, not most, I shouldn't, several of them had no idea that the business was even in the building, had not even looked at the windows, and had to ask me, what are you doing with the building, what's going on? And we've been in the building for six months, for six months at that time. If they're on that committee, and they're telling me what I can and cannot do with my space, they need to be more aware of what's going on downtown, if they're on Historic Preservation Committee.
Jim, does this ordinance have any relation to the Historic Registry Code for downtown, or is this simply an arbitrary decision by council under regulation that they adopted at some point?
This is a city code. It doesn't have anything to do with the National Registry.
If we change that, it wouldn't in any way affect?
Nope. Vinyl on a window doesn't disrupt the integrity of a historic building.
Thank you.
Chris?
I move that we, here are going to be, that we, that we affirm the appeal.
That we grant the appeal?
Yes.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilwoman Stevens and a second by Ortega. Shawnee, could you please call the roll?
Stevens?
Yes.
Ortega?
Yes.
Adamson?
Yes.
Bray?
Yes.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Lurick?
I'm going to say no. I just have to explain, I have, I mean, I absolutely support the business and everything that you're doing. The part I struggle with is the process, and that there was a procedure to go through that you did not go through. And working with our staff and working with the HPC, and I just feel like if, if we don't acknowledge that, then nobody's going to follow, I mean, there's no point in having any of these regulations and, and trying to preserve, you know, a historic district if people are just going to do whatever they want. So, I just would like, you know, in the future, to follow the process and, and work with, work with staff on, on it.
Let's just, it's, we'll, we'll move on.
Yep.
We're granting your appeal. If there's something offline you want to visit about, that's perfectly okay, but we'll move on.
Thanks.
Did you, what, did you have a question? Can I ready to?
I just want to comment on Linda's comment.
Yeah, let's just move on. We'll move on. Thank you very much.
Because then I would want to comment on Linda's comment.
Perfect. Thank you, Messina, for coming. We'll move to agenda item 10, Japanese American Citizens League, JACL Donation Acceptance Airport. Counsel may wish to, counsel may wish to accept and authorize the mayor to sign any pertinent documents pertaining to a $10,000 donation from the Pocatello Blackfoot Chapter of the Japanese American Citizens League, JACL, to be used for the purpose of the funding of Silk Rose Garden Phase Four of the airport origami art display. Counsel President Adamson?
I move that we accept the donation and authorize you to sign any pertinent documents.
Second.
We have a motion by President Adamson and a second by Lurick. Shawnee, could you please call the roll?
Adamson?
Yes.
Lurick?
Yes.
Bray?
Yes.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Ortega?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda item 11, FAA Grant Application Pocatello Regional Airport. Counsel may wish to approve and authorize the mayor to sign all pertinent documents related to a grant application and award under the American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA. The grant will be administered by Federal Aviation Administration, FAA. The grant amount will be in the amount of $37,374 and must be used to provide relief from rent and minimum annual guarantees to in-terminal concessions. There is no local match required. Chris?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we accept. Agenda item number 11 is written.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion by Councilmember Stevens and a second by Ortega. Shawnee, could you please call the roll?
Stevens?
Yes.
Ortega?
Yes.
Adamson?
Yes.
Bray?
Yes.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Lurick?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda item 12, Resolution Lease Agreement Pocatello Regional Airport. Counsel may wish to approve by resolution and authorize the mayor to sign a lease agreement with, what do I say again?
Gornicek.
Gornicek Services LLC, DVA, Pocatello Airfare, for approximately 525 square feet of space inside the airport terminal to operate a retail shop selling food, clothing, souvenirs, and other items. The lease term will be three years. The rental fee will be 10% commission of gross revenues monthly.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilman Cheatham?
I would move for approval of agenda item number 12, the Resolution and Lease Agreement at the Pocatello Regional Airport, and authorize your signature on the lease after legal approval.
Second.
So I have a motion by Cheatham and a second by Bray. And thank you, everybody, but Bray, I heard you. Shawnee, would you please call the roll?
Cheatham?
Yes.
Bray?
Yes.
Adamson?
Yes.
Lurick?
Yes.
Ortega?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda item 13, Resolution Lease Agreement Amendment, Pocatello Regional Airport. Counsel may wish to approve by resolution and authorize the mayor to sign an amendment to the lease agreement between the city of Pocatello and Pocatello Trap Club. The amendment allows for the reopening of Trap Two with the stipulation that it will be rotated by 10 degrees, 45 minutes, and a new post, one shooting station will be installed, and the old post, five-shooting station, will be removed. Councilman Cheatham?
Mr. Mayor, I move for approval of agenda item number three, the Lease Resolution Agreement Amendment with the Pocatello Regional Airport and the Pocatello Trap Club, and authorizing your signature after legal department approval.
So, are you, do you mean agenda item 13?
Did I say 12?
You said three.
Oh, Lord.
I'm glad I'm not the only one.
If it's 13, I'm going to second.
It's been a long.
I was going to say, I'm glad I'm not the only one now.
If it's three, I quit.
So we, yeah, we're starting all over again.
Yeah, yeah.
We have a motion by Councilmember Cheatham and a second by Stevens.
Sure.
Shawnee, would you please call the roll?
Cheatham?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Adamson?
Yes.
Bray?
Yes.
Lurick?
Yes.
Ortega?
Yes.
Agenda item 14, Collective Bargaining Agreement Amendment Fire Union.
Counsel may wish to approve adoption of the amended fiscal year 2022 through 2024 collective bargaining agreement for the International Association of Firefighters, Pocatello Firefighters Local 187, and authorize the mayor's signature on all pertinent documents subject to legal department review. The amended version includes final language regarding the 4896 schedule and approval and implementation of Pulsar Informatics.
Mr. Mayor?
Counselwoman Lurick?
I move that council approve the adoption of the amended fiscal year '22 to '24 collective bargaining agreement for the IAFF Pocatello Firefighters Local 187, and authorize the mayor's signature on all pertinent documents subject to legal department review.
Second.
We have a motion by Lurick and a second by Cheatham. Shawnee, could you please call the roll?
Lurick?
Yes.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Adamson?
Yes.
Bray?
Yes.
Ortega?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda item 15, Bid Acceptance for Pocatello Test Wells Water Department. Counsel may wish to accept the recommendations of staff and award the bid for the Pocatello Test Wells project to High Plains Drilling Incorporated in the amount of $141,250, and authorize the mayor to execute all current contract documents subject to legal department review. Funds to cover the expense are available in the Water Department fiscal year 2022 budget.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Stevens?
I move that we accept agenda item number 15 as written.
Second.
We have a motion by Stevens and a second by Ortega. Shawnee, could you please call the roll?
Stevens?
Yes.
Ortega?
Yes.
Adamson?
Yes.
Bray?
Yes.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Lurick?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda item 16, Task Order Number Five, Pocatello Creek Booster, Booster Services During Construction Agreement, Water Department. Counsel may wish to accept the recommendations of staff and authorize Task Number Five, Pocatello Creek Booster Service During Construction, and authorize the mayor to execute contract documents subject to legal department review. Total cost of the scope of service is the, the amount of $750,778. Construction during the project is a total of 18 months, therefore adequate funds to begin the project are within the established fiscal year 2022 budget amount of $10,304,000, and the remaining funds will be budgeted for completion in fiscal year 2023. Councilwoman Ortega?
I move that we accept agenda item number 16 as written, and that you can sign whatever you need to sign after Jared tells me you can.
Very well-stated. I hate having to have Jared's permission for everything, but it is what it is.
I love the motion.
Did somebody second it?
Yeah.
Okay. Oh, thank you.
Shawnee, we have a motion by Councilwoman Ortega and a second by Cheatham. Would you please call the roll?
Ortega?
Yes.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Adamson?
Yes.
Bray?
Yes.
Lurick?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda item 18 is an ordinance, an ordinance of many sections.
17.
Did I skip over 17?
Go back to three.
Gosh. Well, I'm trying to get us through here. I mean, we got this thing going.
We were waiting for Jared to tell you.
I know. Can I go to 17, Jared?
Sure.
Agenda item 17, Piggyback Bid Acceptance for Combination Rudder, Vacuum, Sanitation, Sewer, Cleaner, Truck, Water Pushing Control, WPC. Counsel may wish to accept recommendations of staff and approve the piggyback bid on Sourcewell Contract Number 122017-FSC-2 via Metroquip for the purchase of one new 2021 15-yard Vector 2100I in a 2022 Kenworth T880 chassis in the sum of $465,000, and authorize the mayor's signature on all pertinent documents subject to legal department review. This amount has been budgeted between the WPC's, budgeted in WPC's fiscal year 2022 budget. Roger.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we accept the piggyback bid for the equipment that the WPC needs, that we offer, authorize you to sign all pertinent documents subject to legal department review.
Second.
We have a motion by Bray and a second by Ortega.
Before you bid, please, ask a question. This says a 2021 truck, that model year is over. Is this truck already available?
It says 2022 Kenworth.
Well, it says it's a 2021 tractor.
Levi Adams, WPC Superintendent. The truck is the, the Kenworth is a 2022. It is actually a truck that is available. Metroquip had a certain amount allotted. The Metroquip equipment is the 2021. It's still all brand-new equipment.
Okay. And it is available now? We're not waiting a year for it?
It is going to be here when it gets here. It's not necessarily here. It's the, the Metrotrip equipment is here, the truck they have ordered, the Metroquip was allotted a certain amount of trucks, that's why it's been with that Kenworth.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we have a motion by Bray and a second by Ortega. Shawnee, could you please call the roll?
Bray?
Yes.
Ortega?
Yes.
Adamson?
Yes.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Lurick?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda item 18, An Ordinance Amending Sections of Title 17, Zoning Regulations by Amending Chapter 17.03, Zoning Districts, Increasing Building Height Allowances for Specific Zoning Districts to Better Align Code with the Goals and Objectives of the Comprehensive Plan. Counsel, how do you wish this ordinance to be read? Councilman Bray?
Mr. Mayor, I move that ordinance's agenda item number 18 be read only by title placed on final passage for publication, and that only the ordinance summary sheet be submitted for publication.
But you know, one of these times, I want to hear that trio version that you were talking about, that a cappella simultaneous ordinance reading.
That would be good.